We call the regular meeting of the Board of Education to order June 17, 2020. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mission statement of our school district. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda? Please go to your chats. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor? I say aye. So carried. Donna, do we have questions or comments from interested citizens? No, we do not. Elsie, do we have an update on questions and comments from interested citizens? We do not. Do I have a motion to approve the guidance plan action? I have a motion, a second. Are there any questions about the guidance plan? Can we discuss this? Ask Suzanne. Do you want to?
I can provide an intro if you'd like.
Thank you.
No problem. Part 100 of the State Education Department's Commissioners Regulations requires school districts to have a guidance plan in place for students from kindergarten through 12th grade. Part of the regulation states that the guidance program should, quote, "prepare students to participate effectively in their current and future educational programs, to help students who exhibit any attendance, academic or behavioral, or adjustment problems, to educate students concerning avoidance of any sort of sexual abuse, and to encourage parental involvement." In addition to having these elements within the guidance plan, we are also required to review the plan annually and have the Board of Education review the plan and approve the plan. We have a team that annually reviews it that consists of guidance counselors, administrators, and other staff. This year's plan has a number of minor tweaks. We changed some of the language from guidance counselor to school counselor, which is what they are now being referred to as, as well as we updated the organizational chart with regards to staffing and the distribution of staffing across the school district. Otherwise, much of the guidance services that we provide across the school district, which is not isolated exclusively to guidance counselors, to school counselors, it also includes our social workers, our school psychologists, our behaviorists as well. So once again, annually, we have a team that goes through the plan just to make sure that it reflects our current practices within the school district. And I present to you the 2020-2021 version of that plan.
Thank you. Christopher, you have a Chris, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, were there any changes that need to be made to this on the premise that there's a potential of maybe we had to do things virtual again? Like if we had to go on computerized next in September, does that change your plan at all? Is there any need for you to put anything in this plan that would affect that? Or is it just whether it's computerized or if it's in the classroom?
Not so much. The plan is focused specifically for all students across the district with regards to receiving support from the various counseling staff across the
Okay.
Even virtual. The related service staff at the elementary level, we have social workers and psychologists at the elementary level who continue to communicate with the students that they provide services to. At the secondary level, the guidance counselors have caseloads, as does the social workers and school psychologists. And they continue to reach out to their students and be available for, you know, the office hours that were maintained by the teachers were also maintained by all of the various counseling service providers as well across the school district, in addition to the regular counseling services that they provided.
Are there any other questions? Eric? All right, there being none. All those in favor? And if you voted before, please vote again. I say aye. It is so carried. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 18 regular meeting, May 19 special meeting, May 27 special meeting, June 3 special meeting, June 8 special meeting, and June 9 annual budget vote and election? Do I have a motion? I guess we have a motion. All those in favor, I vote aye, or we're fine. Thank you. Did we have that many meetings? My heavens. Do I have a motion to accept the canvas of the vote and adoption of resolution declaring the results of the June 9, 2020 annual budget vote and election? All those in favor?
Just a question on that?
Yeah, yes.
You said June 9. It was actually the 16th. Is that going to matter in technical terms anywhere along the line? That it was adopted on the 16th, 9th?
No, it was originally the 9th, and that's evidently by law the way we're supposed to post it.
Okay, just checking the clarification.
All right. Thank you. Lorraine, we'll get to that. I see your question. Do we have enough here for that? All right. So carried. Reports by Board of Education committees. Chris, anything on policy, sir?
Not really. We've been kind of bogged down with all the budgetary stuff that we really haven't been able to really meet. So I think we're going to try to meet maybe early next week or early July. We're going to try to get maybe right after July 4th, maybe when we come back and start to get some things in place, prepared for the new school year in September. So.
We do have one policy that we can probably work on over the summer. That's from Bargov's side. So we'll come up with a meeting.
Okay, great. Dawn Visitation, Orange County School Boards Association?
So Orange County School Board Association, the meeting has been postponed to, I believe, sometime next week or the week after, so I will hopefully attend that. And as far as the visitation, we are looking into resuming the visits as we had scheduled. There was a few schools left before we stopped school. So I will keep you updated on that.
Great, thank you. Dawn, facilities. We had a walk of the athletic facilities where Chris pointed out some things that needed attention.
Yes, it was Mr. Di Lorenzo did an excellent job of making a punch list. And we accompanied him with the architects, did a walkthrough. Patrick is following up with the architects and the vendor to make sure that the punch list is addressed. Again, Chris's notes were quite extensive. It's very impressive. I don't know if any of the other people that walked had any comments or not, but it was a great job. It really, really is helpful because once we're done with this, it's on us. So I think Chris's action saved the district probably quite a bit of money.
Yeah, follow up on some of the sort of end things that need to be adjusted.
I don't know if Patrick has any additions to that to add?
I think you've touched on everything, Dawn. I mean, the only thing I would add as far as facilities, there's three facilities-related bids on the agenda tonight. The connector path between the stadium field and the upper field, the paving, and we had discussed some of this yesterday, actually, in our walkthrough, paving in and around the bleachers, which would go up to the high school. There's a portion of the roadway or paths from the high school. So that'll connect, so that whole area will be paved. And then an HVAC sort of technology district-wide bid on the agenda tonight as well.
John, the only thing I might add is that in addition to Chris mentioning a lot of the issues that we saw during the walkthrough, I would say that Lori Hock is also on top of every one of those issues and pretty much in lockstep with Chris and all of us that we've seen. And I know that she's making sure that all of those items will be addressed and taken care of in short order.
Good point, ain't they?
Yeah, she pays attention. She certainly pays attention. Dawn, we haven't had an audit committee meeting. Is there anything in the future, just sort of a slack time in the middle here?
Yeah, as of right now, unless Patrick has anything to add to it.
Okay.
No, not really. I mean, there's an item on the agenda, the engagement letter and agreement with Nugent-Hausler, but that's really the only audit related right now.
Right. All right, thanks. Thanks, folks. We don't have a formal report by the student representative, Maeve Harrington, our outgoing student representative, but she will have a few words when everybody has a few words at the end. Personnel, Matt?
Good evening. Before I get to the items listed under personnel, last meeting at the special meeting, we were able to recognize our retirees. There's one addition to the retiree list. We recognized two of them the last time, so I just want to make sure I give one more person his due. And that's James Upsher. James is one of our custodians. I know, Elsie, I guess you didn't know that. He's been around for a lot of years. He will put every one of us to shame. He does his 100 pushups a day. He's older than anyone who's on this meeting right now. He is an amazing man. When I started as an assistant principal, we used to have like the summer learning lab over at CV, and I was the assistant principal. And he, or I was the principal of that for the summer, and he was one of the custodians. And, you know, you meet somebody sometimes, and you just know that they're good. And he's one of the good ones. So he'll be missed. There are
Can I just say something?
Sure, absolutely.
Awesome. He, when he was my custodian at the middle school, his grandson is the star of Everybody Hates Chris. And he happened to come and visit one day at the middle school. Boy, was there an uproar. And he's such a humble man and just a great human being. He will be missed. I didn't know.
Sorry. And I haven't had a chance to talk to his wife through this whole process because she's been helping him with the emailing of everything, and she is just as sweet. So congratulations to both of them, quite honestly, on this new phase. There are two MOAs on there, which are the extensions of contracts so that could be discussed, so that we would then, you know, begin negotiating with those two groups later on in the next school year. And that's all I've got. So I would respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor, aye. I say aye. So carried. Business and financial, Patrick?
Yes, John, I would also respectfully request approval of the items listed under the business financial section of the agenda, which include our standard monthly financial reports for April. We have one donation, $25 donation to the Inspire Success Alumni Scholarship from Ms. Peggy Porter. So we thank Ms. Porter for her generosity. There are nine contracts for approval, seven agreements with special education-related service providers, one revised agreement with the town of Woodbury to share appraisal costs in the defense of the ELT harem and tax statutory proceeding. And it's, there's also a resolution to rescind our former. We approved that resolution early May to rescind that and approve this new agreement. It's a very minor change whereby if the cost exceed $25,000, that was the original amount we had put in there. We agreed to talk to the town of Woodbury about continuing our contribution. That's the change. They had asked for that sort of at the last minute. We have our agreement with Nugent-Hausler, which I mentioned, for the audit of the 2019-20 fiscal year financial reports. We have a series of resolutions, five resolutions, one of which is rescinding the agreement with the town of Woodbury. The others are entering into agreements with special education service providers pending completion of final agreements. And there's a series of bids, about a half dozen bids and RFP award recommendations for fuel delivery charges, roadway paving, I mentioned that. The AC upgrades, we mentioned that. Tank and dispenser services, the turf field connector ramp, we mentioned that. And non-public school transportation services. And finally, there's a budget transfer that exceeds the threshold. So we need board approval to execute that.
Anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to accept business and financial? I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, I say aye. So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the arrangements of the recommended placements made by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education? Items 13.1, 1.2, 1.3, 4 on your agenda. Do I have a motion? Is everybody ahead of me here? Everybody's ahead of me. Got it. So carried. Reports by Board and Central Office, Chris?
Well, first, I just want to say, I guess Friday's the last day of school. It seems like everyone's had a tough go here the last couple of months, but it's finally going to be over and we'll have to move forward. To all the high school seniors, congratulations. I know it's not the graduation that everybody wants, and the festivities and whatnot are limited. But we'll have to do, make the best of what we can do. Keep moving forward. I believe it's a good motto. It's from the movie The Robinsons. I happened to just see it on TV yesterday, flicking through. And at the end, the motto is keep moving forward. So that's going to be my advice to all you students out there is keep moving forward, and things will progress the way you want in your lives. I want to say good luck to all the students, all eighth grades and underneath everybody coming up. I want to thank the community for passing our budget, which would have been a very, very difficult thing for us to do if we had to extend that and go to a secondary budget hearing and whatnot. So that's not good. I want to thank Lori Hock. Yes, I took some credit for walking those fields, but Lori Hock really, really had extensive notes on what needed to be fixed and what was fixed and what's going to be fixed, as I brought to her every one of something I said to her, she had an answer for me. I want to thank John. This is going to be, it seems like your last chaired board meeting, which it's sad to see you go. But your longevity in the district as a board member is appreciated. You've done a great job, and I'm glad to say I sat with you on this board for the last six years. So good luck to you and good luck to everyone this summer. Have a safe and healthy summer. That's the most I've spoke on these things in a long time. So enjoy, everyone.
Thank you, Chris. Dawn?
Yes, Chris, I was going to say that I don't know if I have quite as much to say as you do tonight, but I'll give it a try. So first, I want to say that today I was invited by the high school administration to be a part of the Top 25. And what an amazing day it was having to visit all of our Top 25 seniors and celebrating with them and just an overall great day. So thank you for that, and congratulations to those seniors and all of our seniors. And I know that this has been, you know, quite the challenging spring for you, but, you know, the comeback is definitely better than the setback. So looking forward to all the great things that you'll do in the future. I also want to thank John for all of your many years and dedication to Monroe Woodbury and your vast knowledge and everything that you've done for our students and our community. Maeve, congratulations to you. We're going to miss you so much. You've been amazing for us as a Board of Education representative. So good luck to you, honey. Yes, thank you to the community for passing the budget. And just many thanks to the superintendent, our cabinet, our staff, our families, everything. I mean, this has been the most challenging time for everybody, and everyone's patience as we work through this together, because we're all in this together, has been definitely appreciated. So thank you and have a good night. See you all soon.
Thank you. Dawn?
Well, first, I would like to, you know, thank John for all of his service. I serve on many boards, and I have to say that, you know, John's understanding of what it is to be the president of a board is an example that I could use in every single one of the boards that I'm in, including the hospital. It is, his service is amazing. And even though his political views are completely wrong, I am very, very proud to call him a close friend. And I will miss him dearly on this board. Thank you, John. That's the most important thing I wanted to say today. I'll pass it to the next person.
Thank you, I think. Suzanne? Unmute yourself, Suzanne.
Okay. Better? Okay, thank you, John. First, I wanted to say I had an extremely exhausting but rewarding, an amazing day visiting the Top 24, well, 24 of the Top 25. It was really a privilege to be able to do that. And I want to congratulate them along with the rest of our graduates. I know this year has not been what you wanted it to be, and it's been extremely difficult for you and your families. But congratulations to all of you on well-earned diplomas. And Maeve, we are going to miss you so much. John, thank you for your service to the board and to our district. It's been a privilege getting to know you. And I want to thank the community for passing our budget. I lived in a community where we dealt with a contingency budget. It's not a good thing. So I'm very grateful that our community has passed our budget. And we're hoping, like everyone else, that next year is better and we're all back in the classroom. And as Chris said, we have to move onward, and I look forward to that. And everyone have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Maeve? Maeve Harrington?
All right. I wrote a little thank you statement for everybody. It's short and sweet. I hope you don't mind. Okay. First and foremost, I would like to extend my gratitude to each and every single member of this committee. Everyone has been so patient, so kind, and understanding throughout my experience as a student representative. This has been a fantastic opportunity to speak on behalf of my peers and has given me a little taste of life in the real world. Over time, I have seen a change in myself as an advocate and as a public speaker. I consider myself lucky to have further involved my role in the district with the help of such lovely people. I wish that I could have properly thanked all of you for your faith in me, so consider this my virtual handshake. I will miss working with you, and I promise to keep in touch. It's been a pleasure. And lastly, I would like to congratulate our new board rep, Emily Wang. I wish her luck in her future endeavors. I know she's going to do great. I was talking to her earlier. She seems awesome, so I have high hopes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Maeve. Donna?
I have a few things to say. First, I want to thank everyone in the community who voted, and thank you for passing the budget. I also would like to thank everyone who helped with the budget vote. It was a huge endeavor, and I could definitely not done with all the support that I received, all the election inspectors, the board and cabinet as well. I also just want to give a little shout out to the local post offices because they really did a lot for us as far as making sure we received our ballots and checking for us and giving us statuses and updates. Specifically, Julian Ada at Central Valley Post Office and Arthur, Sandy, and Susan at the Highland Mills Post Office. So I just want to say thank you to them. I want to say thank you to Maeve. It's been a pleasure getting to know you. Best wishes, good luck at Penn State. I'm sure you'll do fine. I want to say thank you to John for your dedication to this community and the students of Monroe Woodbury, as well as the staff. And it has been a pleasure working with you, and you will be missed. And I also want to give a shout out to someone, Lorraine, who has a birthday coming up at the end of the month. So that's all I have to say. Have a great summer, everyone. See you soon.
Thank you, Donna. Bargav?
All right. So as this whole COVID process, a lot of events were virtual. So I attended a few virtual events, the induction ceremony for Word Language, Honor Society Scholarship and Academic Award Night was awesome. Rhythm and Rhyme was amazing, virtual art show for the, virtual district art show, the High School Science Research Symposium, and Virtual Philwick. Awesome events. Even though they were virtual, it was truly a representation of who we are as a Monroe Woodbury School District. Maeve, congratulations and good luck. Go NID Alliance. That's an awesome place to get your college education. And John, you have truly lived our mission statement, so you will be sorely missed.
Thank you, Bargav. Eric? Unmute. No, no, nobody wants to unmute.
I'd like to start by saying thanks to the staff, students, and their families. I've been on both sides, both of the instructional sides of this closure from a professional perspective as well as from the personal perspective. And both of them have been very, very challenging. And it's taken a significant amount of work for everybody involved, the staff, the students and their families and support network at home to keep all of our kids learning through this closure. So a very sincere thank you to everybody who has done everything that they can to try to sustain the quality of education that we provide in Monroe Woodbury. A best of luck to all of our students who are moving up next year, to all of our students, but specifically those moving up, our first graders, our fifth graders, and our eighth graders. Good luck in your new environments next year. But also, most notably, a best of luck to our seniors. I've participated in many of the non-traditional senior events due to the school closure, the cap and gown distribution, the senior breakfast, the Top 25, and a lot of the virtual events. And I don't think it's a coincidence that the weather has been absolutely spectacular for many of the outdoor events. And I think it's kind of a sign that we always need to look on the bright side of things. And best of luck to all of the seniors. You guys are going to make us all very, very proud in whatever it is that you are doing. And I wish you all the best. Maeve, specifically, best of luck at Penn State. You know, you made a great choice, and I'm sure you're going to do amazing. And finally, just a big thank you and best of luck to Mr. Hubert. I had an opportunity to meet him for the first time over 20 years ago when I started in the school district as a teacher. I had the privilege of having one of his daughters in my class. It's been amazing to work for you and work with you for all of these years. Thank you for your service and your leadership to the district and the community spanning over two decades. I wish you all, I wish you the very, very best and the additional freedom that you're going to have with yourself. Best of luck.
Thank you, Eric. Patrick?
Okay, thanks, Sean. I'd like to thank everyone for the work associated with developing this year's budget and counting the ballots this year, especially Donna, who did a ton of work and was really on top of all the numerous details. I'd also like to thank the community for their support of our budget. And we talked a lot about that, and I'm grateful for that support. I'd like to wish the MW High School class of 2020 all the best in the future. It's been a tough way to finish your senior year. I realize that. I also have a graduating senior. But you'll come through it stronger in the end, I'm sure of it. And good luck to you, Maeve. Have fun at Penn State. Study hard. You're going to do really well, I know that. And last but not least, I'd like to thank our board president, John, for his wise advice and counsel for the support you provided me personally during my tenure here, and for the support you provided the organization as a whole. You will definitely be missed, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Matt?
Yeah, I pretty much echo what everybody says. You know, we often talk about the importance of little things and making sure that kids see those little things and our teachers see those little things. And, you know, we've done a lot over the last couple of months trying to cram in the big things also, and that's been challenging. But a big thank you to all those administrators and teachers and parents and, you know, who made sure that those little things weren't missed also. So whether it was checking in on somebody, whether it was, you know, going to their house and making sure that they really understood the math lesson, whether it was, you know, making sure that there was a smiling face at the locker cleanup or whatever it was, a big thank you for the big things and all those little things as well. Thank you to the community for the passing of the budget. It is, it's a wonderful thing that we can look forward with that. Maeve, I said everything last board meeting, so I'm not going to repeat myself, but you know what I would say. And John, you know, I had a chance, I was administrator at North Main years ago when John's wife moved from a teaching assistant to a teacher. And that was a big deal because, you know, she went a non-traditional certification route. And John, you know, I don't know if you remember this, but when I got hired, you were still on the board, and you said, you know, And John, you know, I don't know if you remember this, but when I got hired, you were still on the board and you said, you know, including my wife, Matt, you were probably the single best hire that this district has ever made. I don't know if you remember that. Do you remember that?
No.
Okay, so I may have a warped view of history and that's fine.
I'm sure I said it. I'm sure.
I'm sure you said it. I'm sure you did.
If I remembered it.
I'll say this, John. You know, you're, you're one of the good ones and I appreciate everything over the years and I just wish you a lot of luck. And this is bittersweet, you know, it's bitter. Obviously it could be bittersweet, but it's sweet because hopefully you now have some time to do some of those things that you really want to do. So congratulations on that and have a nice night, everybody.
Thank you Matthew. Lorraine, and you had a question about graduation. This is a time you might want to ask it. You also might want to unmute yourself.
I'm so sorry. Yes, my question was, well, it's not just my question. It's questions have been asked since the letter had gone out to the families about graduation. Is there a reason why we were not going to do the same as what Menasink is doing and Newburgh with the walk? So maybe you can talk about it a little and let everyone in the community know why, what, how, et cetera.
Elsie, unmute yourself.
Sorry, forgot. Well, one of the things that happened was as we began to evolve another, another way of hosting graduation, we had a lot of questions. And so we contacted our attorneys to make sure that we could do what we were planning on doing, which was hosting 150 students and their families. That was one of the ideas that we had. We were then told that new guidance came out on the fourteenth, for which I shared with the board. And what it said was that it was 150 people total. So my question was to the attorneys, well, what would happen if we hosted more than 150 people? You know, is there a fine that we have to pay? And the response I got was, well, it's a little more than just a fine. You will, if anything happens during the graduation and you have not followed the guidance, then your nicer insurance will not cover you. So at that point, we realized that it is not a good idea to put the district in a financial position, right? And we still hold July 31st, which is what the original plan was. The only way to host that would be to do approximately 11 different graduations and then that will kind of lose the whole point of it, right? I think the point of it, and Maeve's shaking her head, the point of it is the kids want to be together and we would have to have much smaller groups in order to achieve the 150 because I think one of the issues that we have is that, you know, we would say two tickets, right? That's what we want to do. But you know, some children have extended families or have blended families and so we would not be able to accommodate that. So it would become approximately 11, as I said before, 11 ceremonies and we just didn't think that that was fair either. Like it would lose their touch. And so we maintained what we're doing, which is what Mr. Cassidy has sent out and we are holding on to the 31st because hopefully, hopefully things will be okay for us to host it. Because I think, and Maeve, you can jump in. I think the students want to be together. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I mean, from a perspective of like me and my friends, like the people who I've talked to. I mean, like all the things that are happening now are like, we're like, what you're doing for us now is just like over the top, over the moon. Like we're so happy. Like we have the the virtual graduation coming up. We have the parade. We have the the little drive-through graduation. So I mean, even if that's just it and that's just it, I think, I think we're happy with what we have now, but we're also, you know, looking forward to seeing if that's going to happen as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Lorraine, did I answer your questions?
Yes. No, you answered my question. I just think that it was, other people had asked. But I want to say to Maeve, that is an example of you looking at the glass half full. That is awesome. And since I'm going to now talk about what I need to talk about, Maeve, good luck to you. It has been a pleasure. Okay, so I wanted to just thank the community for passing the budget. Lots of luck to you, John. Thank you for your dedication. You are definitely dedicated and like was said before, you're always available. You are right in there and your knowledge has been very appreciated and good luck to you. Good luck to your retiring as a board member, so take advantage of it. I'd like to congratulate Don and Dan again for their winning and welcome Michael. This has been really a rough year from the beginning of having the virus, the cyber virus. This has just been one of the roughest years that I've had on the board. So I got to say hats off to the administration, to the teachers, to everyone, you know, just I don't know, there's got to be some reprieve here. I was reading and I'm not sure if anyone else got to see it, but if you get the photo news, I think it was two weeks ago, a young lady who was a senior wrote something. I think she was from Massachusetts. And she, she talked about how this graduating class or this incoming class came in during or after, right after nine 11. I think their elementary graduation was around the time of the Boston bombing. And I think it was when they went into high school was the mass shootings. So this has been a, you know, a very, very rough. I guess a lot of experience these students have and they're resilient. And I want to wish them a lot of luck. I'm sure whatever they do, they're going to be successful. I don't know if there's anything else. I had a couple of other things written down, but I can't read my own handwriting. So I just want to, oh, Donna, thank you so much for acknowledging me. I will be celebrating a birthday, God willing, and that was, you know, that was totally out of the blue. So thank you. I appreciate that. And everyone have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Stacy.
Can I just jump in before Stacy?
I was going to say, I think, I just asked Elsie a question to clarify, so let her go first.
So, you know, I think they brought up Newburgh. And I had a conversation with the superintendent from Newburgh who hadn't read the updated guidance. And so they were going back to redo their plan and speak to their attorneys as well. Because that was my recommendation. Talk to your attorneys. The last thing that any school district needs to do is not have their insurance cover any issues. And as far as Menasink is concerned, I'm not aware of that. He was actually the first person who mentioned your insurance carrier. So I'm not sure. The last time I heard was they were going to do the same thing that we were doing, which is the drive, the drive up. So I don't, I don't know that to be true. The only other person was, as I said, was Dr. Padilla.
Sorry Stacy, I didn't see your question. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for clarifying Elsie because I do think that that's been a question that's going around the community is what the other schools are putting out that they are doing. I'm going to echo what a lot of the other board members said, that it has been a very difficult year for the seniors and I know Maeve can attest to that as well. I do want to reiterate what Mrs. Rodriguez's letter said today when it went out, that there have been a lot of conversations behind the scenes with a lot of people. And so I can honestly sit here and say that there has been a true effort to do the absolute most we can do with the limitations that have been set. And I feel comfortable saying that. It has been difficult and I apologize to the seniors because I can't imagine it and I know that it's not ideal. But I'm hoping for the July 31st as well. With that being said, I did, was able to participate today in the top twenty-five, which was not a normal top twenty-five either. It's normally a very calm luncheon that we sit at and we have delicious food served to us by the seniors. And today we were jumping out of the car 24 times at random houses screaming at the top of our lungs and honking horns. It was wonderful. It was a great time, but definitely very different. I also want to say a congratulations to all the rest of the graduates, the fifth graders moving on to the middle school and the eighth graders moving on to the high school. Again, I know that their ceremonies are not what they had originally planned, but I want to wish them all the best. And hopefully their senior year graduation will be even the best ever. I want to thank publicly Donna as well because the community has really kind of reached out and said that this budget vote was very difficult. And Donna was literally answering every email, every phone call, every question that came up from the budget, not just from community members, but from board members, from, from everybody. So I want to say thank you because I feel like she stepped up and went above and beyond in unprecedented time. Thank you to the community for passing the vote because I think it's all to benefit our children, so I'm thankful for that. And last, I want to wish John all the best. I echo the same as all the other board members have said that he has done a great service to our community for sitting on the board for as many years as he had. It is an unpaid position, so I'm not quite sure why he came back so many times. But I do want to say thank you because it is a thankless job. So I appreciate the time that he has put into our students. And good luck. Have a great summer.
It's unpaid?
Don't be looking for a retroactive check, John. It's not coming.
What was I thinking? Thank you Stacy. Anthony.
I guess the word is wow. What a year we've had, right? Literally, I think Lorraine said it from day one of the school year, we had the cyber issues which CIT team dealt with fantastically and the the administration, the students dealt with it, then we move into the pandemic with, you know, all the unbelievable problems that that caused and a fantastic response by the administration and the cabinet and the teachers and most importantly, the students and the parents. And we all dealt with these daily issues with the changes in the rules by our fantastic governor and the changes regarding the budget and the delayed budget and the elections. And thank you Donna for all you did and everyone that helped Donna. And thank you to the community for voting yes to pass this budget. We've got a change in the board this year, so welcome to Michael. And John, really sorry to see you go. Thank you for all your service. It's like everyone says, it's been an honor to work with you and you're truly an inspiration and we are definitely going to miss you. And, you know, congratulations to everyone really to show their true colors for an unbelievably historic year, but especially to our senior class and all the students. And Maeve, congratulations to you and good luck in Penn State. But it was an unbelievable year, a historic year full of a lot of different hurdles that everyone involved with this district, I think, showed their true colors and was able to overcome and will make us all better in the future. Happy summer to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you Anthony. Dan.
I got to attend virtually the high school scholarship award ceremony, the World Language Honor Society inductions, Rhythm and Rhyme, all virtually, which was different. It was nice. Got to sit on the couch. Top twenty-five I was part of today. That actually got me out of the house. It was nice to get some fresh air and hang around with some other people. I'm looking forward to graduation. I know it's not the graduation that everybody wants, but you know, I'm still happy that we are going to be able to provide something for the seniors that they can get in their cap and gowns, cross the stage and hear their name in ours. I want to thank Donna for putting up with this whole voting endeavor, we'll call it, to say it nicely. It was a lot of work. Thank you very much for keeping everybody informed and handling the concerns from the residents. Yeah, it's, it's been a one lousy year. Computer virus, dealing with the funeral of NYPD Officer Mulkeen. Then we got hit with a second virus, the real kind, the coronavirus, no offense Bargav. But it's, you know, it's the resiliency of the people that are in this district that we get through it one way or another. We find ways to make it work. We find ways to to get things done to make sure that our students are still receiving the best education that we can give them under the circumstances. John, I want to thank you for your service to Monroe Woodbury. I want to thank you for sitting next to me for six years and taking all of the nasty jokes that I'd send your way with, you know, a good heart. You really did a very nice job of wrangling eight other strong personalities at times to get us to where we needed to be. And, you know, I want to wish you good luck in whatever endeavors you move on to next. And finally, Elsie, I've sent you an Amazon ad for a waterproof tissue box. Since you're doing meetings outside now, I figured it might be something that you need to have on hand just in case. So Maeve, best of luck at Penn State. And I can't believe summer's almost over. Only a teacher would say that. Everybody have a great night.
Thank you Dan. Elsie.
I know this has been an unusually difficult year for everyone, but I want to take a moment to thank our staff, students, parents and our Board of Education for their unwavering commitment to our students. I had the privilege today for the first part of the trip to accompany the high school administration and several BOE members as they traveled around town, surprising our top twenty-five students. It was awesome. I'm very proud of our students and how well they all adjusted to a dramatic change in instruction. Congratulations to our students who are moving up, especially our seniors. Thank you Donna for everything that you did. I know this was a monumental task. And I just want to remind everyone that we have a lot of work ahead of us this summer with our reopening task force. Our first invite went out today for our meeting next week. And I want to thank the community for passing the budget. Finally, this is a tough day for me. I have to say goodbye to someone who has become my friend.
Oh God.
Order it now. It'll be here in two days if you have Prime.
It's better this way. John, for the past six years.
Elsie, you only cry about students. Stop it. Stop it.
Well, you're like my student. For the past six years, you have been instrumental in helping to lead the district through some very challenging days. You trusted me from the first day I took on this role of superintendent has helped shaped my leadership style. I will miss you. Okay, now I won't cry anymore. As a parting gift, the board and the cabinet and I have purchased following inscription with a quote by Marion Edelman, founder of the Children's Defense Fund. "Education is improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and world better than you found it." John, thank you for leaving our school community better than you found it. I want to take a moment to thank our new BOE member, Mr. Michael Cirillo, and I want to wish everyone a safe and healthy summer. Sorry for being emotional.
Thank you Elsie. You are forgiven. Everybody who said everything, budget vote terrific. Thank the community. Maeve has been thanks so much for going to Penn State. I want to know where graduate school is at this point. I want to thank. Wharton. The seniors and all of the students moving up, congratulations. I want to thank the administration and the teachers and the staff and the Board of Ed that I've worked with over the past about seventy-five or six years. I'd like to welcome Michael Cirillo. He is, he seems like an absolutely terrific addition to the Board of Ed. So I think that that's great. And Donna, probably the everybody's been thanking her for the vote, but the support she's given the Board of Ed and the anticipation that she has for our needs and problems has just been wonderful. So I thank you for that and I thank everybody going forward for the next year. Hopefully it will be a less strenuous year than this, than this year, though it will be filled with challenges getting back to school. So I wish everybody Godspeed. And do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Aye, I say aye. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.